Dr. Furley brings his son sign up he can begin. Thank you. Alright, for the Monday, June eleventh, two thousand twelve South Bend Common Council. The location by Reverend Janet Paul. Captain, please.
If you will bow your heads with me, please. Most gracious Father, we thank you on tonight. Thank you, Father God, for life and thank you, Father God, for just your love and your mercies, Father, that have kept us throughout this day. And Lord God, we just acknowledge you in all of our ways where you are the director of our lives. And Father, as we come together tonight, we thank you that you are in our midst and we thank you for your presence. But you said that we're two or three are gathered in your name, that you are in the midst. And Father, we pray for those that are in authority over our lives tonight. We ask God that you would uphold them on tonight and God that you would give them wisdom and that you would strengthen them out with all might. And God that they might make all of the right decisions on tonight for the welfare of the people which they serve. We pray especially for our mayor on tonight and we ask God that you would keep him, that you would watch over him and God that he, his well-being, Father, would be of you and that every decision that is made, Father God, it would be as well for the welfare of our city and our citizens. And Lord God, as tonight's agenda comes before our council and God, they are called upon to make these decisions. God let their way, their decisions line up with your word, Father, that all men within and women within our community might lead a quiet and a peaceful life. In Jesus's name, we give you thanks and we say amen.
Amen.
Fugitive to the right of the United States of America. To the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, the earth and heaven.
First to John Hordy, read the roll. Mr. Scott.
President.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Andrew here.
Mrs. Shea.
Here.
Dr. Furley. Dr. Furley?
He doesn't know his pardon.
Dr. Varnik.
Hi.
Here.
Vice President, Vice President Oliver D.
President.
Councilmember White.
President.
Mr. Furley.
Here.
President, dear.
Present.
I am present.
Thank you.
We have the report from the subcommittee on minutes.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the May twenty-ninth, twenty-twelve meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Derek Dieter, David Varnik.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second?
Motion, now we have a second, all in favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, thank you. Under special business, first to John Hordy, roll fifty-two, please.
This is a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, awarding Consuela Accounting and Tax Service with the May twenty-twelve South Bend Business of the Month award.
Oh, thank you, uh, part John Hordy. I would like to ask all those who are in favor of this particular, uh, resolution, either please stand and join me at the podium. As Ms. Consuela, uh, is available in here, and you are, I see you, would you please come forward?
Everybody else, come on. Rest of the room, you go in there.
Mr. President, this was a great distinction that I, uh, I'm going to, uh, read this particular resolution and I want to make mention right now to, uh, some of the things that Ms. Consuela has been doing on, uh, Lincoln Way as well as looking at second district of the city of South Bend and I think those things have been wonderful. Uh, as what we saw last year, this past year and then the year before with the Lincoln Way cleanup, corridor cleanup, how we brought in community leaders and partners and also residents to take part in cleaning their neighborhood. And so each year has been very, very valuable to Lincoln Way Corridor, but also a plus when you're talking about energy and making sure that people take their ownership in the areas that they live in. And so, um, whereas the city, the, whereas the common council, Southern Common Council notes the community needs a wide variety of quality businesses that serves the multifaceted needs of our residents and organizations and whereas the common council is especially proud to recognize that in two thousand five, the Indiana Secretary of State approved the incorporation of Consuela Accounting and Tax Service located at twenty-two seventeen Lincoln Way West in South Bend, Indiana. And whereas the common council further recognized that Consuela's, if I say that wrong, Consuela's Accounting and Tax Service is known as a growth-oriented regional accounting firm whose goal is to provide their clients with a higher level of quality service. And whereas Consuela's Accounting and Tax Service is especially well-known for valuing their clients by incorporating many innovative techniques which are based on leadership teamwork and as they honor their professional obligations to the public in providing the best possible services. Now therefore, being resolved by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana as follows, section one. On behalf of the citizens of the city of South Bend, Indiana, the common council is pleased to publicly present to Consuela's Accounting and Tax Service with the May two thousand twelve South Bend Business of the Month award, section two. The common council thanks Consuela Hopkins, the president and CEO of Consuela's Accounting and Tax Service, who started this business after fifteen years of accounting, banking, and tax preparation experience at leading financial institutions and who has provided the leadership necessary to create and maintain this outstanding business. The council would especially like to thank Consuela Hopkins and all the employees of Consuela's Accounting and Tax Service. You are an excellent example of the local business in which truly provides benefits to our entire community to participate in annual community cleanups, providing opportunities for others to, to delight them and go supporters and help them to clean the beautiful, beautiful, excuse me, to beautify our city, excuse me. Congratulations and we wish you continued success in the future. Section three, the resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after adoption by the council and approved by the mayor and you have all the council members signed on this particular resolution. Council, I ask you to obviously adopt it by a, a complete affirmation.
Thank you very much. Any council members would like to make a comment? Ms. Hopkins, I just wanna, with the first district bordering Lincoln Way, uh, I just wanna thank you for all your hard work and your citizen involvement that you've, uh, done. I would also like to offer up, uh, my services to help clean and also, uh, get volunteers from the first district side to join in with you.
I'm glad you do that.
Absolutely. I think it's a good partnership and we can help grow this. So, thank you so much for what you've done.
You're welcome.
Councilmember White.
Yes, I would like to personally thank you and your, um, company and all the investments that, uh, you have been able to pull together to really, uh, take on the commitment that it is our community and if our community wants to become better, it's gonna take each and every one of us. I personally like the way that you have involved the younger, uh, people within the community, some who don't even live in the same district, who are willing to come and to give their time to do the work that we know is going to start to. I just thank you and, uh, uh, she could be one of my students that I was talking to this morning.
Thank you so much, Mrs. White.
Councilmember Davis. Ms. Hopkins, you're a shining star and you can see all those who are with you tonight to indicate their support and their encouragement and you have really done an excellent job in making our community proud and I would like to thank you.
You're welcome.
And I would like to, uh, thank you and the entire group. For those that don't know, the area that they clean is from, uh, Wilbur's Olive on Lincoln Way. And I've been out there the last two years when they've been out there weeding, trimming, sweeping, picking up a lot of things.
Growing flowers.
Wouldn't need, uh, see, uh, flowers and everything. So, I think, uh, next year, Mr. Scott can probably get the people from the first district to go down from Wilbur to Cushing like we, we talked about for a long time and then hopefully extend out of Lincoln Way farther. But, uh, for everybody, starts early in the morning with, uh, the bright yellow t-shirts and all the snacks, not telling it's the fruit water and everything. Sign for the business there. I appreciate all the work that you guys have done and not just, um, cleanup side, but in addition to the local people that you employ and you try to help out through the business of teaching them skills that they can work on through the accounting business and, and later on in life, so thank you for that. And anyone else like to speak in favor of this? No opposition? Council?
Should I make a statement myself?
Yes, you will.
Well, my son, he wants to make a statement, it's okay.
Well, I'm very proud to be my Ms. Consuela's son and I'm glad that she always helps out people when they need help and she's very forgiving. And I'm not just saying that 'cause she's my mom because she is like everything to me.
Well, I'm Consuela's mom, so I'm very proud to, to be here. I currently live in Lafayette, Indiana, but I'm, uh, citizen for a lifelong here in Lafayette. Hi Karen, how are you? And, uh, and I'm from Lafayette right now, but I grew up here in South Bend. So, I just wanna say to, um, to everyone that when my daughter had said that, uh, they wanted to clean one block of, um, Lincoln Way and when she said fifty blocks, in my mind, I thought, are you kidding? But then knowing Consuela, I didn't say anything 'cause I learned. So, she says fifty blocks, she means fifty blocks. So, uh, it's been, um, my honor really to be her mom and, um, to also be a part of everything that she's doing and I'm glad to see that she does have the support of the city. So, thank you very much for everything and for this honor for my daughter.
I've known, um, my sister, I say sister in Christ, 'cause I am her pastor, okay? I've known her since she was very young, very young. And, um, growing up, we become very proud of her extinguished duty that she has performed in, in the city. Myself, I'm from Ohio, okay? But I've been living here now for the past twenty years, but, um, we're very, very, very proud of her accomplishments and, um, and we pray that, uh, that as she goes on, that the accomplishments in this city which I have come to love, uh, would benefit from it. And we say may God bless you for this award and, um, I for myself, thank you and, um, the prayer that I have and love that I have for her is, um, is outstanding. God bless you.
Thank you.
My son, okay? Um, I'm Consuela's daughter and my name is Amira Hopkins. Um, I'm glad to be her daughter. Um, I think she deserves this award because she's been good to her clients and I help her out sometimes and yeah.
Well, my name is Michelle, I'm the oldest of Consuela. Yes, little girl, I'm sorry. Um, I'm just, I'm thankful to have a mom like Consuela. Um, it's very helpful 'cause most people my age don't have the help that my mom gives us. So, I just wanna present you with the flowers and the gift I gave you. And you can take it, do you? Okay.
I just wanna take this moment to just thank everyone, you know, from, of course, first and foremost, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I thank the council for considering me for this, um, award and resolution. I thank my family, church family and my family who are coming out tonight, our employees who are here represented and the citizens of the city of South Bend. I'm thankful that you're here. Um, this business, this cleanup, um, is heartfelt. I have to say, I've been born and raised here in South Bend, um, have been a journey, has been a journey. Um, I was, uh, went to LaSalle High School, graduated from LaSalle High School when, um, and I was blessed to start my business. My husband was sent on assignment, if you will, to Florida and I've been a business owner. We were there, um, a couple of years, I started a location there as well. And one of the things is our kids grew older and our business here really thrived. We had to, you know, come back as full-time residents before we were six months here, six months in Florida. And one of the things though, my daughter, Amira, had came, uh, went, really kicked off this cleanup and she, we arrived back and forth up and down Lincoln Way, we were flying, we come down Lincoln Way and she would say, wow, it's so different here than in Florida. So, what do you mean, daughter? She said, well, mm, it just looks like a junkyard along this aisle. Wow. This is where I grew up, is what I loved. But she was like, you see so much letter, you know, the love and compassion and to know that it was so much better than that. I remember, I know each and every one of us, whether we lived over on Lincoln Way, we knew someone who had a business, we, Lincoln Way was a part of all of our lives, you know, and I just wanted to make sure we restored that and uplift the value back into, um, Lincoln Way Corridor. And like my mother said, when my daughter said, it looks like a junkyard, I said, tell you what, we're gonna clean it up. So, that's what we're doing. And again, our goal is from Martin Luther King Drive to Olive Street, both sides. And we don't only just cut grass, I mean, we edge, we plant flowers, we get all the neighbors and the business owners out of them. Of course, you know, it's our second year, so everyone necessarily doesn't see the value, but I tell them we're coming anyway. So, you can either come out and help us, you know, but we're gonna do it. And I was amazed too, how many people kept saying, have you, what is the city doing? What is the city doing? I said, well, you know, they're supporting us. But what I want you to understand is whether the city does nothing, this is our neighborhood. This is our responsibility to clean it up. And it's been that kind of ownership that I find that makes the difference with our business owners trying to, um, incorporate them into our residents, you know? So, it's been a wonderful journey. I am so thankful for my experience and knowledge with, that IU has given me as an education and, and with that, the love that I bring back and, uh, my business been established for sixteen years now, I'm so thankful for that. Started from home, after, um, deciding, after I left corporate America, started from home, you know? We quickly grew from our home business. Then my husband built me an office, you know, then I go out, you know, thought we were downtown South Bend, it was absolutely gorgeous. But three years later, we all grew it and, and the rest is history. So, I thank you for this opportunity, but I must say, being a businesswoman, anyone needs accounting, payroll or tax service, please make sure you call us and I have to say.
It occurs.
Anyone needs accounting magnets, so everyone has magnets up there and the number is simple, it's two-eight-seven-ten-twenty, like the tax service. So, thank you so much for this opportunity and have a great evening.
Just like to say the world, uh, I'm the husband of Consuela and I like to be, uh, in the background. My wife is always in the forefront, but I, she's a hard-working lady and I respect her a lot and she has a vision and she leaves it to me to make it happen. So, I thank, uh, the council, thank Mr. Dieter, I was very impressed with seeing him come and, you know, uh, take care of us. We thank the city for, uh, some of the cops that, that, uh, worked with us, with unified effort and everybody, uh, supportive of everybody. We appreciate that. I thank my church family for being here. Just thank for my wonderful wife, she's a, uh, an asset to my, to our family, but more importantly, she's an asset to the city too.
Everybody, come on up here for a quick photo. Quick? Nobody can cross that line. Come on, Kenny. Hordy, go ahead. That's second district.
Uh, President Dieter, a man I have to report, this is always, um, I wanted to make sure that, uh, Consuela, uh, knew and understood that the council had drafted a resolution last year and obviously passed through, uh, not a resolution, but a deal, a, a, now a, uh, ordinance for MBE and WBE and as we are looking for more minority businesses to become a part of our, uh, MBE and WBE program that is sanctioned by the state and federal, uh, law, that Consuela, uh, began to probably, you know, sign up and make sure that we understand that you are MBE or WBE, uh, enterprise business so that we have you on the list of WBE, MBE and, WBE and MBE businesses here in the city of South Bend. So, to a value, uh, to you and your services that you're doing, but all women business enterprises as well, minority business enterprises as well, so, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, yes, I would also for the record like to make note of, um, a greeting card received addressed to the entire South Bend Common Council from the Navar school, uh, school kids, students who, uh, were here last week asking the council to, um, show some additional investment to, uh, Kennedy and, um, Belgrade Park in particular. And, uh, it reads as follows, you didn't have to do what you did and that's what made it so nice. Thank you. And it's signed by these, uh, twenty kids. Pretty cool.
And as a note, uh, President Dieter, we did not take a vote for twelve fifty-two, so, so moved.
Yeah, we did. We did. Yeah, I didn't hear it go without. The man you're gonna have. There you go. Okay. Proceeding reports of committee houses. See none? They have a motion resolved in the committee of the hall. Second, all in favor? Aye, in the opposition.
I'm going to remain in my seat in regards to the committee of the hall. I would like to say that the committee of the hall is now in session. This is a portion of the council meetings where Bill is given a second reading and a public hearing. I would like to entertain a motion regarding Bill twelve dash twelve.
Will you call that, so, to G and A for six twenty-five? Second?
If they move a second in, all those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion, the motion carries. I would now, um, like to receive a motion to resolve the committee of the hall.
Second? All in favor? Aye, in the opposition. See none? The council is now in session.
Oh, was I supposed to motion?
The whole council is now in session, they have a motion for eight twelve, please. Would you continue Bill, uh, eight twelve until six twenty-five to request that the, because of legal, uh, reporting requirements. Second? Motion, second, all in favor? Aye, in the opposition. Do you not have to do anything at twelve twelve?
Right.
Alright. Now, let's proceed to twelve forty-seven. That's forty. Okay. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, determining after investigation that the lease of property at three nineteen Niles Avenue, South Bend, Indiana is necessary for use as a general office space. Thank you, committee reporter.
Yes, uh, the personnel and finance committee heard Bill twelve dash forty-seven and we send this bill to the full council with, uh, without a recommendation.
Very much, presenters.
Uh, good evening, uh, members of the common council. I'm Aladeen DeRose, acting city attorney for South Bend with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. I'm also here in my capacity as attorney for the South Bend Human Rights Commission. Not able to be present this evening is Lonnie Douglas, Director of the South Bend Human Rights Commission, and he is particularly interested in, uh, this, this resolution. Rarely in my history with the, uh, city attorney's office have the, has the, um, administration come before the council regarding an outside lease, but, uh, the statute in, um, Indiana law commits an outside lease, that is a property that's not owned by the city, if it's necessary and its rent is reasonable. And this is a situation in which both of these are true and, and, and which is a particularly important matter, uh, to the city. The South Bend Human Rights Commission investigates claims of discrimination by those who are aggrieved in employment and in housing on the basis of race, sex, religion, disability, color, national origin, and recently sexual orientation and such sexual identity. It is a quasi-legal building, a quasi, it functions as a quasi-legal agency and as such requires confidentiality for those who come to discuss their claims. It should be fully ADA accessible, recalling that we administer the ADA for the city of South Bend, the Americans with disabilities have. And it should be convenient to low-income persons, uh, because those are, are primarily the persons that, uh, come before the commission, uh, with their, with their complaints. the, the building where now is housed at three oh one South St. Louis was located. There was nothing else available at that time, and to mu- to the best of our knowledge, there is nothing available today in which place, in which place the Human Rights Commission. The building at three oh one St., South St. Louis is beautiful. It's a WPA structure built in nineteen thirty-nine on the National Register of Historic Places, uh, but it cannot safely house the Human Rights Commission. So that brings us to why we're here this evening, and, and that is that the city has located a property that meets all the three basic requirements of the Human Rights Commission, that there be a place for confidential, confidentiality or confidentiality can be preserved, which is fully ADA accessible and which is convenient and located at, uh, within a bus line. And that is that, um, that is located at three nineteen, uh, Niles Avenue. Um, the statute which, which authorizes the entry into a lease requires simply that the common council make a finding that this lease is necessary, and that's what the resolution that we've provided offers. I have, I have provided, uh, I, I have, um, made a substitute, uh, I have drafted a substitute bill and, and offer that in lieu of the bill that was originally presented because it's a, it contains more sta- a more factual, um, assessment of what occurred at the common council, I mean, I'm sorry, at the public works meeting, which is the required place for the public hearing on the issues of necessity and, um, reasonableness of lease. Um, in terms of the, the issue of reasonableness of the lease, I have with me present a member of the, uh, finance, administration finance, administration finance committee, uh, sorry, administration finance department, who was part of the search process, that I know that the city looked at thirty-one different properties and narrowed it down to six, and that of those six, the one that, uh, is located at three nineteen Niles meets the, all the tests and requirements, and, uh, Phil Custer, who is here with the, uh, fi- uh, with the Department of Administration Finance, will talk to you and, and discuss with you the, um, the reasonableness of this lease in light of the, the other, uh, options that were available. So, we are, we are asking this evening that the council approve substitute bill twelve forty-seven. I hope that a copy was distributed to everyone. As I said, it just, it's, it, um, two sections are revised from the previous version just to be more consistent with the public, uh, hearing at the public works, uh, board, which is the leasing agent for the city under the statutory framework. Um, I'd be happy to answer any other questions of the council, but I do just want to note again that this is extraordinary, it doesn't, it happens very rarely, and if any, if any, um, office of the city is deserving and, and needs new space, it's the South Bend Human Rights Commission. Thank you.
I believe, uh, Davis, question, question for you. What is your, um, um, target date for you all to move, um, relocate, and I'm glad that you are doing this because I have been in the human rights and it does, you need to get out of there, um, quickly. And so what is your target date to be able to move?
Our target date is really just the council process and then the, um, the preparation of a lease. What, what we have presented to you and what we presented to the public works as a lease for thirty-five fifty per month, we're still in negotiations, we're hoping to reduce that lease price by a few hundred dollars at least, and, um, and hope to do that within the next few weeks. We also need the funding, um, there will be a request for a transfer fund out of the, uh, special services, I believe, of the, um, administration of finance department to the human rights department. So it's, it's money that's already within the Department of Administration of Finance being transferred to the, uh, Human Rights Commission. That will take special actions by you, and when that's done, we, we hope to get moving.
Um, so basically, um, two things on that. Um, first of all, um, once that's completed and just hopefully this everything's passed, um, and favorable, um, what are we looking at then, in terms of relocation?
The, well, the commission would like to be there yesterday. Um, realistically, we're probably looking at the very earliest and hopefully the first of July, but that assumes, it, that assumes that everything gets done in proper order.
Now, you also said, and the last question I have, um, regarding that, in terms of earlier today, you said that the cost includes the utility.
Yes, exactly.
So currently, the utilities are paid by the city.
That's correct.
So now we're gonna have to deal with the utility bill because we've been dealing with a issue of, um, um...
That's correct.
So, um, now, do you know what the utility cost from that is that we currently have now?
I, I don't, but I do know that the re- that the roof is, it's, I know that the roof is not insulated, I know that the, that the heating is, um, is extremely high, I know electric's high because they have to use space heaters, so, um, I'm, I'm sure that all of those costs are higher than average because it's not energy efficient.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yes, uh, thanks for the information. Um, I want to apologize, I did not make myself quite clear. This is a list of all the properties the city owns, correct?
To the best of my knowledge, I requested that, and that's what was said.
And I, I think we could filter it down to probably the list of properties that the city owns that is vacant. You know, my concern is, is there a property that we own already that could fit the bill?
I, I am sure, and, and I would have, have Mr. Custer confirm that, but, um, when we put the South Bend Human Rights Commission in that building originally, that was the only building that fit their needs. This is a quasi, judicial, quasi-legal, uh, agency of the city, and it's, it's office based, it has to be office based, and it has to fit, uh, it has to have a conference room and all of that has to be, you know, rooms have to be made confidential. At that time, about ten years ago, this was the only building that fit, so we looked at others at that time, it can only assume that without additional inventory, there's really nothing else that will match for them, and I know that that was the exercise because we certainly don't want to incur any additional expense, particularly in these kinds of, of difficulty for our citizens.
And also you stated earlier in the committee that there's gonna need to be a build-out at the Niles building, about two hundred fifty thousand?
No, no.
Or forty-five thousand.
About forty-five thousand, yes. And that will be payable over the five years of the lease, so that's a, that's a component of the rent.
Yeah, that's my only concern is, you know, was that due diligence done that we looked at vacant buildings that the city owns?
I, I'm sorry.
No, um, my, my concern is, was the due diligence done that we looked at vacant buildings that the city owns?
Yes, we, we would have gone there absolutely first and only then, and only, as I said, this is rare, we've, um, we've done this maybe twice that I can recall.
Okay.
Uh, will we demolish the existing, if, when they move out, are we going to demolish?
If we can't, this is a public, this is a national landmark, it's on the National Registry of Historic, WPA building, uh, what we'll have to do is, is, I guess in terms of mothball and make sure that it's reserved so that it's intact, um, and that at the time, at, when we can make reasonable improvements to it, uh, we will do that, I assume. Uh, keep in mind that we, the Human Rights Commission uses both floors, uh, ultimately the set of basement need not be used, the Human Rights Commission must have the basement area, use basements at all where the, where the housing director is located, it must be ADA approved, but we, if the cuss court could be used for another use, I assume.
Do we, the city of South Bend, own that right now?
We do own that, it was part of, it's part of the parks department, it's parks department property.
Just a point of information, um, this wrote, uh, specifically, this was advertised on the title, in this situation, we advertise the entire bill. The fact that you're requesting a substitute version of it, well, that, I don't see, I don't see, um...
No, thank you for asking. No, the only thing that the state law requires, they require that there be five things, and all of those were, are within this bill. The identity of the landlord, that's clear, the term of the lease, the, the event payments per month, the number of years of the lease, um, and that it be re- that it re- that be reasonable and that there be a necessity for it. So all of the requirements of statute are met in the version, the previous version.
And this is your first step of a modified step, right?
Yes.
Any further questions from council?
Thank you, Chair. Um, really quick, I was, um, looking over some things and I thought, uh, really quick about, uh, code enforcement, building department, looking at all these buildings that the city owns and making sure that they're up to par or obviously up to, uh, standard, and I was really interested in finding out how often does the city, as far as the building department as well as the city code enforcement goes out and looks at the buildings that we do own to make sure that they're up to code. Clearly, this has been a problem for, uh, as you say, two years, and if this building isn't a condition that it's been, and I don't advocate for any employee to see South Bend and work in subpar conditions, uh, maybe we get out in front of this and make sure that all buildings are up to standard before we begin to start shelling our money or finding out, not that I'm against it, believe me, and that I'm not, before we start saying, okay, we're just gonna produce new buildings or go to new buildings and start paying for these new buildings because of, uh, some hazardous, uh, uh, working conditions that, uh, residents be in. So I'm gonna ask that maybe we, uh, ask the administration or request that the administration, uh, 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 incite that the building department as well, the, uh, code enforcement goes out, uh, to all city-owned properties and make sure all city-owned properties are what's in the code, uh, of the state code and also municipal code that we are governed by. That's my first, uh, deal, so I don't know how that works, but I'm gonna make a recommendation that that happens, because I think that that's necessary, because maybe the parks department's gonna come in, you know, next week and say the same deal, and then thereafter, other departments can follow as well, um, as well as when we're sitting in this building, there may be some issues with the building that we're sitting in right now that the, uh, uh, department's actually exist in, and we still have the same issue. So I'm gonna ask, uh, uh, council president, leader, um, and, and city attorney and clerk office that we get a letter out to the administration requesting that that action takes place, uh, get an update on city-owned property and where departments are actually at to make sure they're up to code. That's my first request, so is that feasible? Okay. Uh, the other, uh, deal is, uh, the Human Rights Commission, are we outfitted, uh, to optimal level when it comes to technology in that building?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so...
Yeah, we're not.
Because I think technology is important, especially when we're using the computers and sending emails back and forth and what have you, uh, so that, you know, the, the Human Rights Commission operates at a very high level, and so communication, we type, pass back and forth whether it's through paper or through electronic transfers. So that is my second recommendation that we do as well. Um, the last, um, and this is another issue that I think that we actually have with the, uh, Human Rights Commission, you said that we have over a thousand, um, for lack of a better word, complaints per year that come in?
Inquiries.
Encores, okay, inquiries would be a better word. Encores, um, how many of those encores coming from outside of the city of South Bend?
Uh, the Human Rights Commission keeps those records, I don't have that list with me, but, uh, they report that, uh, it mostly on how many, how many, uh, persons call in, how many persons walk in, how many persons are from within the county and how, how many are from outside, so those statistics are kept.
And the reason why I ask that question is because, um, when we had the last Human Rights orders to come through the council, I noticed that a lot of the addresses that people, says they were from, their personal addresses, they were outside of the city of South Bend, and so it serves as, uh, notice that the residents of such cities may not be taking issue with some of the things that are going here, but it may be a Miss Walker or a Grainger issue, and so a recommendation that I also would make is that maybe the Human Rights, uh, Commission is not necessarily a city entity, but becomes a county-wide entity so that they have wider and larger arms to deal with some of the issues that, uh, this department actually tackles on a day-to-day basis. I think that would be more valuable for all the parties and people that live in the St. Joseph County area, and so that is another recommendation. So, as of right now, I'm not really comfortable in dealing with this right now, per se, but I think there's a larger issue that goes from the place when we begin to carry on a business as usual, when we, and again, I'm not against people and their working conditions, believe me, I think that everyone deserves to be in a comfortable environment, but when we begin to not look at the larger picture, we try to get hung up, uh, with smaller things, whether than operating at a larger level that will enhance the lifestyle and the quality of life of the people that live in the city of South Bend and even St. Joe County right now.
Any other questions from council?
Is this a federally mandated program?
Yes, it is.
Does Miss Walker has one?
No, it, it's federally mandated, but it's optional whether local, um, communities or government, local government set up their own human rights agencies. Uh, the South Bend Human Rights Commission began, I believe, well before, it was one of the first human rights agencies within the state and probably one of the first within the nation, uh, and I believe it began back in the early seventies, maybe this can't, this can't be fair.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three, that's, so, within ten years after the Civil Rights Act was passed.
The county, they don't have one either.
The county does not.
What's the annual budget?
Um, I don't have that, but I, what I do know of it is that the commission is furnished by funds from the EEOC, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, which has designated South Bend as one of its local agencies to receive its claims. So, in answer to Mr. Henry's question, people can file claims with the Human Rights Commission who don't live within the South Bend area. We get paid for that by the EEOC. We can't investigate, we, we, we refer those either to the Indiana Civil Rights Commission or to the Equal Employment Opportunities Commission.
So, you don't get paid for South Bend residents?
We do get paid for South Bend residents.
Like, is it federally funded?
Most, most of the commission's budget is federally funded, yes.
That's good.
There's a portion funded by the city, and the city provides my services to the commission, um, and that's a form of, of, of cost allocation, um, and then there's another component of city funding, yes. But the Department of Housing and Urban Development contributes for the housing, uh, investigations that we do, and the EEOC contributes for all of the employment discrimination cases that we do.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Well, just asking, this...
When we, and again, I'm not against people and their working conditions, believe me, I think that everyone deserves to be in a comfortable environment. But when we begin to not look at the larger picture, we try to get hung up, uh, uh, with smaller things, whether than op- operating at a larger level that will enhance the lifestyle and the quality of life of the people that live in the city of South Bend, even San Jose County right now.
Any other questions from council?
Is this a federally mandated program?
Yes, it is.
Does Miss Walker has one?
No, it, it's federally mandated, but it's optional whether local, um, communities or government, local government set up their own human rights agencies. Uh, the South Bend Human Rights Commission began, I believe, well before, it was one of the first human rights agencies within the state, and probably one of the first within the nation. Uh, and I believe it began back in the early seventies, maybe this can't, this can't be fair.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three, that's, so, within ten years after the Civil Rights Act was passed.
And the county, they don't have one either?
The county does not.
What's the annual budget?
Um, I don't have that, but I, what I do know of it is that the commission is furnished by funds from the EEOC, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, which has designated South Bend as one of its local agencies to receive its claims. So, in answer to Mr. Henry's question, people can file claims with the Human Rights Commission who don't live within the South Bend area. We get paid for that by the EEOC. We can't investigate. We, we, we refer those either to the Indiana Civil Rights Commission or to the Equal Employment Opportunities Commission.
So, you don't get paid for South Bend residents?
We do get paid for South Bend residents.
Right, so, only federally funded?
Most, most of the commission's budget is federally funded, yes.
That's good.
There's a portion funded by the city, and the city provides my services to the commission. Um, and that's a form of, of, of cost allocation. Um, and then there's another component of city funding, yes. But the Department of Housing and Urban Development contributes for the housing, uh, investigations that we do, and the EEOC contributes for all of the employment discrimination cases that we do.
Thank you.
Jeff, I think, this, this property list, this doesn't include redevelopment property, does it?
Uh, Mr. Dieter, I don't know. I was asked to, I, I asked to have a list of all of the properties owned by the city.
It doesn't.
It probably, uh, because I looked at it, it looked more like.
Points, or at least as big as this, so I don't.
Those were the, those were, those are public work.
I'd like us to be able to get, again, not the, the labor for against whatever, but also just against the, the, uh, redevelopment properties, because I know it's a lot bigger than this list. And there's probably half a state, and I don't know if they even went and looked at that, uh, stuff when they.
They, they, they did, and Mr. Inks was present this afternoon, and I know that they've done a thorough job of looking at anything that would be, uh, amenable to this usage, but it's a long time.
So, I, I would like to get, for the, I'd like to get that list for, that we have that also, at the point, yes.
Um, just regarding the financial issue, is it, um, City of Missy Walker, don't they contract services or, or in the plan, so contract?
There is discussion and dialogue going on between South Bend and Missy Walker, but Missy Walker has not contributed anything to the.
As of present time.
At this present time. They do help sponsor the Human Rights Awareness Luncheon that took place at the end of April. They do that, and I think that contribution is about five thousand dollars.
Is that the same as the county?
The county, the county, to, to the best of my knowledge, did not, for such a direct contribution, no.
Okay. And, um, I think, um, Mr. Dieter, regarding the list, um, Mr. Inks, I think with the record would say that the redevelopment building, there was something to the, that he said that they have already been predetermined about what their uses were, something to that? Did you all remember hearing that today?
No, one building. Those, in regards to showing, so I'm, that I were pro, but I thought he said that even when they go get buildings, they pretty much have determined them when they bought them. Somebody said that today.
Is Mr. Inks made a.
I thought I heard that today.
Mr. Inks made a broad comment that he looked at everything, and this was a particular inquiry about that building, and he explained why that, that building wasn't appropriate.
I have a show, right? Is that, is there anything else you want to?
Yes, I have, I have Phil Custer here to answer any questions you have about, um, the reasonableness of the nature.
Phil Custer, City of South Bend, I'm in the Finance Department. Um, as Alvin said, we initially started looking at, uh, new facility for a Human Rights, um, apartment, and we, uh, looked at, uh, thirty-one potential sites for, for them. And from that list of thirty-one, we, we narrowed it down to five, uh, that we thought met the needs, uh, of the Human Rights Department, primarily accessibility, and secondly confidentiality. Those are two key, uh, things that are required. Um, from that list of five, we, uh, selected three nineteen Nile Avenue. Um, it's a, a one-story building, it's got, uh, off-street parking, it's on a bus route, uh, currently has four offices already in place. Um, we were able to talk to the landlord, and, uh, he, he agreed to give us some of the, uh, desks and, and filing cabinets and receptionist table and all that good stuff, so that, uh, we don't have to buy that, so. Um, the current expenses for, uh, Singlist Boulevard are approximately seventeen hundred and seventy-eight dollars a month. So, we're looking at basically doubling our per-month cost, um, if, if the speech is approved, we're, we're looking at like thirty-five, fifty-five per month in, in lease cost. That includes, uh, janitorial service and parking lot, uh, stolen, trash room, like, stop.
All right, any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, just, not to belabor it, but I'm going to belabor it. Um. The, out of the thirty-one buildings that you looked at, were any of those on either the current list, redevelopment list, that the city owns?
No. Those were buildings that, uh, were available currently.
Okay, yes.
Uh, Council President, uh, clearly, we don't have enough information right now, and, uh, there are some outstanding issues with this particular deal, and I, I would like to reiterate that I am not advocating for, for working conditions for any city employee or any private entity, uh, whatsoever. I just feel like that we probably should continue this over so we can have more direct dialogue on the issues that are presented here on the floor. And so, um, once, uh, obviously, the public portion is finished, I would like to make a motion that we continue this over.
Thank you. We're not to that point yet. Is that to conclude the presentation? All right, anyone from the public might just speak in?
If the council is going to have a public hearing, you need, I would recommend that the, uh, public get the opportunity to address the substitute bill, since the administration would, it all likely be, uh, the public's substitute bill. We are not.
We'll talk that, that kind of, right?
Yes, for Dennis.
Motion to Second Success for substitute, all in favor? Five, the opposition. Now, from, anyone left from the public like to speak in favor of the substitute version of this bill? Anyone in opposition, oh, in favor? This is in favor now.
Reverend Greg Brown, twelve thirty-eight Diamond, South Bend, Indiana. I'm in favor of them having good working conditions. But the conclusion of the matter is, I want them to look at all the buildings. Buildings that we own, buildings that has already been reconditioned for this first, second, and fourth district, I'm in all the districts. This is, I'm a community man, and, uh, but I do want everybody, I want to work in good conditions, I want to see them in good conditions. But the follow funding and the things that's going on, I think the board as a whole needs to hear the conclusion of the matter. The Bible says that all you're getting, you're understanding. Senator Brown at, uh, two 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 East Nevada, we're up against Citizen United for a Better Government. And I also would like for the council to get more information, especially on, uh, property at, uh, St. Louis Street. Since we can't break it down, how much are you going to be in, in money to bring it up to standards? You know, that's very important. I think you should have more facts. I'm not, you know, I'm a hundred percent for the Human Rights Commission being into a positive building. Something that's safe, private, I'm all for it, but also, um, you don't have enough facts for what, uh, she brought up here tonight. So, I hope that you were tableless, get more information, and bring it back. And being a citizen, watch it all for spending government money, that's what I stand.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Gondarei Hernandez, I live at seven oh two East South Street. I'm a member of the Human Rights Commission and appointee of this council. I've been on since nineteen eighty-four. It is. I hope that you're not going to postpone this any longer. I think there has been sufficient investigation, and that it's time for us to be, move into a better situation.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? How about any opposition?
My name is Wendell Johnson, I live at three oh five South Southern Street. I live out on the, uh, West and Avenue corridor. You know, many buildings there that are emptied and development needs, uh, ample, uh, has, uh, I should say, hasn't been taken advantage of for ample opportunity. Human Rights Commission is supposed to serve all, because it's serving everybody probably outside of the county rather than what's in the city. A lot of people that are probably in need of those services are probably in the west end of South Bend, and are very seldom, if ever heard. Have you ever used those, uh, services at the Human Rights Commission? Have you ever gone there? Have you ever tried to pay an intake, et cetera? If they want a bigger building, revamp, identify a need to improve, and to help the city. If you look at the minority population, have they been serviced well? Are you getting your money's worth? Ask yourself these questions before you even allow them to make a move. We want improvement, we want our city to grow.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in opposition?
Chesky Davis, thirteen thirty-three Calvert. Um, I was just kind of confused because they have made a few comments that they had looked at buildings that the city owns that supposedly, uh, I guess, weren't ADA compliant, weren't up to standard, and then they made comments that they said they didn't look at, uh, buildings that were on a list or on two different lists or whatever. So, it's kind of confusing. I, I think the council needs to, uh, postpone this and take a look at it. Obviously, human rights are important to everybody in our community, but, uh, at this point, you know, who, who's the landlord that's going to, uh, be taking the money on this lease as well? And is there copies of this, uh, secondary thing for the, uh, public to look at? Do they have them available, or will they be available before this gets voted on?
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Councilman Davis, you want to make a motion? Does he need to rebuttal? Does he like any rebuttal?
The, um, the Board of Public Clerks was, was advised by legal counsel of the requirements of the act, and the requirements of the act are, you don't go outside unless you have adequately looked within, because that's the test of necessity. And to the best of our knowledge, none of our buildings meet the needs of the Human Rights Commission, which are unique and are special to them, and there are no other spaces that would accommodate this use. All the council needs to do is make a finding that this is necessary, uh, for the use of the commission, and, and that's what we're asking you to do. Thank you.
Yes, I could just add in response to the, uh, last gentleman, the former lease was available before the Board of Public Clerks, before they, that's just.
I can clarify my statement on the, the, the initial list. That list I was talking about was, uh, a list of potential buildings that we could lease. It did not include any city-owned, uh, buildings that was already looked at before we initiated our list.
Who looked at that? Who looked at that list before?
Uh, that was the Engineering Department.
Did they have the, the buildings that they looked at?
Um, I'm not sure.
Did that, did that be available for us?
I'll, I'll add to that.
Was there any, in, in, follow-up to President Dieter, if, if there was a report or anything stating, you know, these were on the list and we rejected them for whatever reason? I'd like to see that, if we can.
I'll give it to you there.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Davis. Um, President Dieter, I would like to make a motion that this bill is continued, uh, to the ninth, which is the first meeting in July, July ninth. And I'm going to ask, uh, for certain caveats, there was a number of questions that were asked, and per record of, uh, the clerk's office, that those were asked, the questions will be answered by, uh, uh, the, let's say, the twenty-fifth of, uh, this month, so that we are, be able to make an affirmative decision on the ninth of July. And, um, there was a list of questions, I'm not going to go back over those, uh, questions. However, I think those questions need to be answered before we can, uh, uh, tackle this issue again. So, my motion is that, uh, uh, we continue this to the ninth based upon the answering of questions, uh, uh, from the administration. The person on finance, which is the committee, uh, Council Number White, our chair.
So, that, all right, so you, you would ask the clerk's office to make sure that the minutes provide for all the questions that were asked.
The men in front of, uh, from that, those based on the floor, and we have some for the community member, residents, but we also have some to council, that people that need to be answered, from the code enforcement, the building department, to the usability, technology. I think there was a list of probably, I'm sure about eleven questions that should be answered.
Yep. Okay, will we have a motion in second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, thank you.
House members, uh, Dieter, I would like for the record to show those to, um, the employees and, uh, citizens, uh, that, uh, the Human Rights Commission serves, that, um, I, and I can't speak for the other council members, but I do know many of them do support a new location, uh, for the Human Rights Commission. There are a number of questions that, uh, were posed, we get received information prior to a seven fifty, I mean, a seven P.M. meeting. Uh, I detour the Human Rights Commission, and it is unacceptable. Uh, it's not accessible for anyone coming into that building. Our employees should not work in those conditions at all. It's not a safe building. Uh, clearly, the Human Rights Commission needs a new location. The question that's before the council, what is the right location? And I think having the time to have all the portions addressed, as well as to have information on our situation, is really good time to spend. But I do not want the Human Rights Commission or the citizens to think that we are not supporting a new location, and these are.
Thank you very much. Motion for twelve fifty-three, please.
Move the twelve fifty-three, if you continue to six twenty-five, uh, if you want.
Thank you very much, all in favor? Any opposition?
For forty, you've stood at nineteen twelve. Bill's first reading, first reading on a bill, excuse me, of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article nine, Administration, Section twenty-one dash oh nine point oh five, Development Review Procedures in Order to Add New Section H, Combined Public Hearing Procedure.
I make a motion, this bill is sent to Area Plan.
Second. A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
Twenty twelve, first reading on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter two, Article eight, by the inclusion of new section two dash one twenty-five point one of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing whistleblower protection.
Will the twenty twelve go to first office and ask if it's set for second, third reading, and public hearing on six twenty-five?
Second. A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
Twenty one twelve, first reading on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter fourteen by the inclusion of new Article ten of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing smoking regulation.
Will the twenty twelve be sent to health and public safety, be set for second, third reading, and public hearing on six twenty-five?
Second. A motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
Twenty two twelve, first reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at eight oh one Hill Street and five oh one Calarama, Council Mantic District Four, in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Move that twenty two twelve go to Area Plan Commission?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Twenty three twelve, first reading on a bill to vacate the following described property. The street to be vacated as a clarification for Vacation Ordinance ninety-nine nine nine four dash ten is a portion of Calarama Street from Hill Streets to the first north-south alley for a distance of one hundred and sixty-five feet and a width of fifty feet.
I move that twenty three twelve is sent to Public Works Property Vacation, may be set for second, third reading, and public hearing on six twenty-five?
Second. A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Twenty four twelve.
Uh, motion to accept the substitute bill.
Sub move.
Second.
A motion in the second, sub, substitute, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? For forty. A new substitute title. The order is. For, 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 I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Twenty four twelve. Yep, um. Twenty, twenty-one twelve and twenty-four twelve are.
Two separate bills.
Mm-hmm. We're working the same, under the same umbrella or title? Okay. Yeah.
Different titles.
Different titles. Same wording. Okay, same, same mission, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sure. Substitute, uh, twenty-four twelve.
Well, I'll get that, one, one, first, first point, is since we moved one to the, um, ninth, does the other one have to be moved to?
Uh, we're, we're twenty-five.
Second. First reading on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter thirteen, Article six, addressing air pollution control of the South Bend Municipal Code by the inclusion of new sections thirteen dash seventy-six through thirteen dash seventy-seven, addressing clean air standards for workplaces and public places.
A move that we send. A move that we send twenty-four twelve to public safety and health on six twenty-five?
Second.
Public safety. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
Twenty-five twelve. First reading on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South End, Indiana, adopting the city's policy concerning nepotism in city employment and contracts with relatives of city officials in conformity with Indiana law.
Will the twenty-five twelve be sent to first office and ask if it's the second, third reading of public hearing on six twenty-five?
Aye.
Second.
A motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Under unfinished business, President Dieter?
Sure. Quite a bit, actually. There was a memo, my name was sent out to the council stating that there was, that we were all concerned about being sent to the Justice Department. And I'm not really clear on when we're sent, how they were sent, the neighborhood where they were received by the Justice Department. So I would like to have an update whether the DIA is the Justice Department or that's where I would like it from, whether those papers actually sent and also received. Clearly, there is communication, it gets a little lax and it gets kind of like muffled. And so I'm asking, I'm requesting that the clerk's office send out a letter to the Justice Department, put the address of the administration I sent off the tapes to, so that we can get some feedback based upon whether they received them, if they have them, and if they're going to be investigating the tapes or hearing the tapes like this request. So that's number one. Number two, I'm going to ask that we have a presentation from the redevelopment per the Renaissance District. We are obviously embarking upon a new ministry here in South End, and I think it'll be very valuable for council members to hear the Renaissance District in all of its supposed to perform and do for the city of South End. I've had that presentation. I had the opportunity to hear a presentation, but there's a part two that's really was the energy from A E P. The city just purchased land on the corner of Sanpo and Lafayette, moving Hamilton's Point in excess of a million dollars. And so what I wanted to make sure is that the city council was aware what's going on, how the dollars are spent, but also, you know, the timeline for Renaissance District and what it means for the total city of South End. So I think it'll be valuable information. So I'm going to request that that happens for our next council meeting, which is the twenty-sixth of June.
Twenty fifth?
Twenty, yeah, actually, the twenty, twenty, twenty-sixth, I'm sorry.
So that, so that, then you'd like them to come to the committee meeting and give any?
Sure. Sure. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Would you just invite everybody?
I'm not aware who will make that presentation. However, there was a Kevin Smith that's working at the lead of this particular project along with administration. So there's several industries that's working in conjunction to make the Renaissance District happen. So I think it would be valuable, maybe the mayor's show, not maybe, but the mayor's, yes, the presentation, Mr. Smith, and as well as the representatives of A E P, to show how all of these combined forces is going to make this industry happen in South End.
In regards to that, how would you, you think that would be thirty minutes?
I, I think that presentation on most shares is probably about an hour or so. As a matter of fact, I'm going to ask that the conversation probably happens on the alternative date as well, because I don't know what our schedule is going to be like for the next council meeting. So not the twenty fifth, but we're going to probably go for alternative date because I think that what we've learned is going to get through the media and also my, just want to follow conversations, but I think that the community should be able to share in that conversation and also the vision for the city of South End.
You're beginning to enjoy it for that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Also, I was alerted by representatives from the Century Center that we obviously appoint. And I've noticed that there will be a vote coming up very soon about extending Global Spectrum's contract for another six months. And I have some concerns about extending their contract based upon their performance. What I think will be valuable to the council is to hear how the dollars are being spent. I am looking at an access of over, close to three million dollars of total funding that comes from hotel motel tax, sixty dollars, professional sports development, et cetera. And also what we can do by actually saving those dollars by moving that in-house versus contracting out another entity to manage our facility, which is the Century Center. And I know that the vote is coming up, so I'm going to ask that we are a part of a conversation before the vote takes place to make sure that our dollars are being spent in a responsible manner. Uh, that vote is, when is the next Century Center, P?
The board meeting?
The board meeting.
I think it's P eight.
I'm sorry.
I think it's eighteen.
This is March.
Yeah, I think it's eighteen.
So it's coming pretty soon.
That would be under council member calendar.
Well, as soon as possible, because the numbers that I'm looking at are on a bad rate. It appears that we are costing, like I said, three million dollars. Century Center, Global Spectrum has received subsidies of one point four million, one point three from the hotel motel tax, a hundred thousand from the professional sports development, uh, tax. And we're looking at the amount of traffic that is reduced over there. And I'm not saying Global Spectrum is not doing a wonderful job or bad job. However, I think that when we're starting to reach free start contracts or sign new contracts and skin contracts, I think it's necessary that when we have people who are seat for the council on these particular boards, that we're well aware of decisions are being made before they make the decision. And so I think, and I know, that if we have a real conversation, and to rest the conversation, we'll find that we're probably spending more money than we should to manage this facility. And so you're talking about making sure that pay raises obviously happen for all city employees. We're talking about managing the buildings that the city has. We're talking about the total city and how we function. So we need to have this conversation before we spend another three million dollars, you know, and we'll reach to probably reduce that probably to maybe two hundred thousand. So that, that is an extreme amount. That's a difference. There's a huge difference in there. Two hundred thousand versus three million.
If you'd like to further that next week or this week to try to get with the council representatives to schedule another committee, this committee meeting?
Yes, I'm asking for that.
And I have, the numbers, I have your right.
You need forty-eight hours by Friday.
Forty-eight hours? So if we got something in tomorrow morning?
You have to go through the process of making sure that majority of your council will protect.
So Thursday would be the earliest. Right now, who would you like at that meeting maybe just to make sure I get everybody else?
Well, all the, I'm looking inside of my voice, you know, but, you know, definitely the committee members.
Also, council.
The council appointings to the Century Center, do you want Global Spectrum to have that in there as well?
Uh, I don't think that it's probably necessary. I think this is a councilmatic issue. I think that this deals with council dollars that we get from the taxpayer. And so if they want to show, I think that, you know, it's not a problem. There was a public hearing, however, a question that had, council appointees and council members are part of the conversation as well as administration.
Okay. Would you like anybody else to run your own side tomorrow morning?
Thank you, sir. And my last point, solid waste in county areas. The solid waste district is looking like they're trying to move into some county areas. And right now, I don't know if that means good or bad for the city of South End, but I do know that's another cost or probably produce more dollars for the city of South End. And when we're talking about cleanup areas, we talk about the pickup that we have, the special team between code and also solid waste, which is work wonders for the city of South End. When we begin to move out of county areas, we obviously are going to incur a cost. And so obviously, these votes are happening before we get to say anything about it. And it happens in the newspaper and then we actually act. So I want to make sure that we're clear on that particular item as well through solid waste and what is happening, as far as them going and territory reducing it, and how much is the cost of the residents and their tax dollars. So, who's the representative who is in solid waste?
So, I'm not solid waste. I'm the paint show. I'm the recycling. I'm not solid waste.
That's actually, that is.
Sorry, I just declared myself solid waste.
That's actually the solid waste district is the title and recycling.
Yeah, you are a solid waste district, you know. I think that's what they were talking about. Oh.
You got it. That is you.
Well, the second team is not the one doing the pickup of, um, they aren't the cleanup crews for, they aren't what's in.
No, that's environmental services.
No, what I'm saying is that those dollars are shared. And so when you're looking at the budget matters, what happens is that we produce a budget, goes to solid waste. Solid waste obviously breaks it down to, there are different parts and parts within the budget after we say yes or we say no. And so what I'm getting at is that we need to make sure that we're on top of or in front of these things before we say yes or we say no, because obviously they're spanning their territory, they're thought, spooked, spanning territory. And we're not a part of the conversation. What happens is that those conversations happen after the vote is made. And clearly, there's some other things that happen that just happen by vote and you're on the back end of it. And so I want to be on the front end of that because they're obviously talking about it in their territory. Because I know it's going to get cost to us. And also, probably something that happens on maybe the east side or west side, wherever, that may stop the services being at an optimal level for both sides of town.
So you'd like to have a version of what their plans are and any expansion they have?
Well, and she's the appointee.
Right.
Yeah, she is the appointee. So sure, I think that'll be valuable. I don't know when that vote is going to be taken place or when that bill will be dropped by administration. But I think that we need to be on the front of that. So I don't know how that's going to be hashed out even the next time that solid waste district will even be.
For clarification, are you?
That's fine. You want to know the, um, the future plans of expanding their services?
Yes, the dollar amount or how does it affect the city positively or negatively.
I think that's the right.
Okay. I have a few things, too, Mr. President. I was out of town. I just got back yesterday. And the council is fully aware that I sent out a public records request. And I got this back from our acting city attorney, Aladin DeRoez. And I will send each one of you, this is, um, yes, candid, but it's basically is short. It says, "Good ol' Ray, thank you. This will serve as a form of answer to your request on the Indiana Access to Public Records dated June one, two thousand twelve. As you are now fully aware, our office has concluded after review of the law that the tapes which you requested are not disposable to anyone. You have described those tapes as related to the mayor's special release of March thirtieth regarding the motion of former police chief Joe Boynton, as well as those tapes cited by the mayor in the termination of communication directed here in the case. Enclosed is a copy of the press release which I prepared and which was circulated to the media on June one, two thousand twelve, explaining our position. Also provided a copy to council attorney Kathy Saczkowski Darren. Since the time the press release was prepared, all tapes were sent to the United States Department of Justice, so they are no longer in the city's possession. May Vinnie Jenkins send you a copy of my letters to attorney Thomas Perez. The second portion of your request concerns copies of Paul Keeney and all contracts and agreements addressing the hiring of the mayor's special legal counsel related to said promotion and firing, total amounts of money paid to date, and the surface of such payments used for the payments of the mayor's special legal counsel along with invoices to payers. These services were provided on a pro bono basis, so there is no public record in existence. Sincerely, Aladin DeRoez." So the legal counsel for the special legal counsel, putting the letters, has been provided to the mayor on a pro bono basis. And therefore, we go to documents page to provide. Putting the letter, you all will receive a copy of that. Also, without last, a report to the mayor. I'd like to thank the administration. I've seen work being done on the bridge. Thank you, Mr. McKinney, for this letter you sent. I was sending you a thank you. So it's nice to see the Chatham Street Bridge being worked on. I had a meeting today, a lunch meeting with Gary Gillock regarding the work on Union Avenue. And he's wanted to be coming up to the public works and giving us an update regarding what's going on with the bridge on Sanpo Street and all of how that's going to affect the Union Street project. I'm trying to relay that back and we'll get everybody, we'll get everything there. I want to thank the administration for giving the information regarding the open window. And I'd like, regarding the, an update regarding how many tickets have been issued to the topic ticket. This program has been initiated based on the last, in comparison to previous years, what's been the, if you can give me an update on that and next meeting. So that's something regarding that and what is the summary of all the things regarding the project. Two things left. One, dealing with the scratch, we have, when councilwoman Chair, which is Chair of the Committee, I'll change on it with the, um, scratch.
Legal dumping.
Um, that program is running out. The money's running out. And as of June, and I got an email saying that what do we need to, can we, I wish, somebody was going to say that what do we need to do to continue that? So we need to have that on the agenda for next meeting. That would come under, that's, um, public safety? So that money is running out that we had already done? Yes. Well, I'm working, I got it. Okay. So, um, there's something that's that issue. And I got the legal, oh, yeah, re-districting. Um, there was committees that we were talking about re-districting.
We still have those.
We still haven't cut those up yet. Okay, just checking on the re-districting.
In regards to your update from, would you like that under report of city offices or committee meeting?
Um, committee offices. I mean, um.
Report of city offices? Okay. So on the agenda for the twenty-fifth, report of city offices, okay.
Yes. This is what you were just talking about, first the legal dumping, also the legality. I have a question to council president. Is there any way that we can request that all department heads show the council meeting? And the reason why I'm asking for this is for clarification and faster communication during council meetings. What happens is that we do leave here and things may get lax or then we may get pounded with some other issues that may take precedence to a paralyze of the things that we were asking. When we can just have these answers, these questions to answer right here on the floor, based upon your concerns with the illegal dumping. That is what I was, you know, touching on when I was talking about solid waste issues in that area. They are working in concert with the code enforcement business as well. So I'm going to ask that, do we have the opportunity to maybe schedule in, uh, city department per council meeting or act that city department head actually shows to all council meetings? But what's more feasible and what's more opposed to council business, each meeting that we have? Because obviously, there's a lot of questions that are being asked when we're talking about Human Rights Commission, now we're talking about code enforcement, we're talking about solid waste, and then so on. I mean, there are many city departments that are being manned and questions could be just answered right now. And no one should have asked them for then there's a strain on the clerk's office sending out letters, there's a strain on council attorneys sending out letters, and then we have to wait for the response. And then we back here two weeks later, hopefully we do have a response, or then we have to continue things over. So I, I want to request or ask that we do request that city department heads show for council meetings.
Well, I would like to do that.
Hold on, hold on, just the first thing. Well, I think if we're going to do that, if there's questions that you would have, so we could give them to the city people so they can show up with some answers as opposed to, uh, ASU says after I have a question to you. I would be fair to us and be fair to them. I just don't want to have nine department people just sitting there waiting for a question. If we have a question, I think we can give them a heads up, and I'm sure they would come if we ask them. I just, I don't want to be put in a position to have whoever from the city department sit there and have to come in and we don't ask them any questions if there's, we can answer, I could see that bugs me. I said, if we have the opportunity to give the questions free and have them come to the, and have them come to the council to answer that, I see no problem with that. And I understand your point, but if we're going to do that, my recommendation is send an email, contact the department head. I'd like you to be at the council to answer some of the questions.
Four hours, four hours out of a month is not asking for too much. I mean, you're given on average, maybe two hours per council.
I understand that.
Yeah, and I mean, four hours per month, you know, with the responsibility that you do have, I'd, I'd definitely ask for much. And that's two hours per council meeting, two times per month. And that's the reason why I asked that question. The second deal, and I'm sorry, was actually the legal thing. And the reason why I'm going back on the legal thing is because clearly, there are people who are working at consol. are working at consulting, asking consultants for the city of South Bend, you know, acting on behalf of volunteer services, uh, there is a state statute or municipal code that I'm really unclear on, that I want to ask for positive, uh, 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 advice on this. We have, um, there is a code that's there that only allows a person to act on behalf of the city as a volunteer, am I correct, for so long, is there a window, or, or, uh, is there a window that that person can act, or, without being paid, without being a public employee?
He's going to go thirty days, you have to be unenjoyed before you could retire, I think, for appearing after that day.
There's none, so a department head can be asked upon, as a department head, and not be paid for three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year, as a volunteer.
Good, okay. Dr. Furlick, project.
I would think that, I mean, I think there's always, uh, a lot of, I think that's actually a city, uh, report, and, and each committee should ask, uh, the city, uh, section to show up, or, or, or to answer those questions, not before the general council, so we don't have to waste a lot of the public's time, and if they have questions about it, we elaborate on it, but I think that's the committee function.
Whatever, however it works, I'm not against that, I just think that we need to have more, uh, participation from the city department head at their council, that's it.
Okay, comes from the chair.
Uh, point clarification, because I think this is confusing, but when you're talking about the solid waste department, there, um, until I was serving on the board, I didn't know this, so for the benefit of all that are here, the solid waste department that is doing the illegal dumping, uh, pickup is actually part of the city, the St. Joseph Solid Waste District is a completely separate entity, and they are not doing the illegal waste, um, uh, illegal dumping pickup.
That's correct.
So I think that, um, when you were talking about, um, them extending their territories, um, what the solid waste, the St. Joseph Solid Waste District is doing is, um, has nothing to do with the illegal dumping pickup, that's the solid waste department within the city. I just wanted to make that clear, because I think that was confusing.
Right. No, other unfinished business. Chief, Chief of Staff, Schmull, had some updates from the questions that we had asked at, uh, previous councils.
Thank you very much, President Dieter, my name's Mike Schmull, Chief of Staff to the mayor, I'm sitting on the fourteenth floor, nice to speak with you this evening. Um, Vice President Davis mentioned, uh, three things which I was going to update council on, uh, this morning, I sent over material relating to the broken window, uh, theory of law enforcement as it relates to traffic stops, also the, uh, latest press release on the nine thirty-three, uh, roadwork on the bridge, um, uh, on thirty-one crossing, uh, towards Angela, uh, that work will be done from June thirteenth until the middle of September, and Vice President Davis, I will be sure to get a summary of the tickets, uh, for you, I'm sorry, I do not have that this evening. Um, the Croc Bridge update, um, which Vice President Davis updated us with as well, uh, completion should be mid-July for that, so work is being done right now. Um, some other things that the mayor's office has worked on, um, we had a successful mayor's night out on five thirty in the fourth district, uh, with Dr. Furlick, um, the next mayor's night in is, uh, June twenty-eighth, uh, here in the county city building, um, we had a successful budget kickoff meeting, it was nice to see, uh, council member White there and, uh, council attorney there as well, um, that was on five thirty-one, the O'Brien Center on the south side, the, uh, vacant and abandoned housing task force, uh, has public hearing, its first public hearing, I might add, at Musso School, that was on five thirty-one as well, there will be another one, uh, this summer as well, we'll keep council advised to that. Um, let's see, looking ahead, we have a budget and finance workshop, um, I believe that's our fourth one with Controller Mark Neal, which I think have been very informative sessions, um, for, for the administration and for council. Um, we also have an economic summit, uh, coming up a week from Thursday, six twenty-one, uh, the agenda and material was sent to council members previously, um, and this morning again as well, I would urge you to RSVP or just shoot me an email, or give me a call if you'd like to attend. Um, I did note tonight, um, that I will get a list of redevelopment properties to council, um, so you can review those, I believe I gathered that information when we were talking about the, uh, downtown police substation, uh, a few weeks ago, so that should be easy to, to pull, also getting touch with Phil Custer to make sure that we have that list, um, the engineering department, uh, looked at. Um, couple things from tonight, um, the illegal dumping crew, there are some options on the table, uh, Mayor Pete has, uh, talked with, uh, the director of code enforcement, Catherine Tassel, um, I'll be sure that there's sufficient communication between, uh, our office and council, uh, before we submit, uh, any legislation continuing, uh, that service, it seems to be, um, was making a huge impact in our community, over three million pounds of debris has been collected up to this point, so look forward to working with council on that. Um, and finally, the, uh, the tapes issue, uh, exactly one week ago, uh, last week on Monday, um, the city's legal department went to the federal building in downtown South End, uh, received the tapes, um, immediately took, uh, the tapes to the US Postal Service, and sent the tapes certified mail to Thomas E. Perez, the Assistant Attorney General, um, in the Department of Justice, um, attached to that package was a letter that, uh, we shared with council, basically saying that we thought that, uh, the civil rights division of the Department of Justice was the best, um, entity, the best group, uh, to review, uh, the materials, um, uh, on the tapes, and so we look forward to, um, receiving a response, uh, from that group and sharing it, uh, with council as soon as we can. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, uh, this evening.
Um, Mr. Schmull, thank you for that bit of information, because that's what I was talking about earlier.
Sure.
Is there any way that we can get copies of your certified letter when it was sent out, and it's not that I don't trust you, but because this situation has gotten, you know, a lot larger than we all have, you know, we feared that it would get this large.
Sure.
And as a result, you know, now that the integrity of the, uh, the public police department has been compromised, people are telling the day, telling states and the city of South Bend, and so on, and as a representative, as a representative, not a judge, not a lawyer, none of those things, as a representative, it is necessary that I speak to concerns of the people that elected me into office, my constituency base, and so when we have information that's concrete, hardcore, then I can go back to the people that elected me into office and say, look, uh, on X date, we put this off, on X date, we received this back from the justice department, since they received this, and we're moving forward.
Mm-hmm.
So whatever you may have that you can share with the council will give me, um, I guess, uh, obviously some more education on what's happened, so I can, you know, take care of the constituency base that put me in office.
Sure, I'd be happy to provide that information.
A quick follow-up on, on Henry's, when, when you guys sent that out, did you guys send any questions, or did you say, here you go, let us know?
Most of it was detailed in the letter that we also sent to council members, basically saying that, uh, we thought that the city was unfit to review the material because of the, uh, matters in which, uh, we believe it was obtained, um, seeking outside counsel, which was stated, uh, just a moment ago, but also, um, direction from, uh, the gentleman, uh, G. Robert Blakey, at the University of Notre Dame Law School, who authored the Federal Wiretap Act, also advised the mayor and the administration on this issue, um, thinking that an outside entity, um, like the federal government, uh, like the civil rights division, um, Mr. President and Mr. Vice President were in a meeting with the mayor and, uh, representatives of the Rainbow Push Coalition, they were seeking the exact same, um, uh, strategy, uh, making sure that civil rights DOJ were able to, uh, be engaged in this discussion, and that's exactly what we've done.
But there wasn't, I think, there wasn't any specific questions?
We, we asked them in that letter, we said, um, you know, there is speculation in our community and in the media, uh, and with people that, um, the commentary on these tapes, uh, may be inappropriate, and may, uh, also have, um, improper, potentially, um, you know, whatever types of activity, and we want to make sure that they, uh, can listen to those and review, uh, that.
Yeah, no, I, I, you know, do you ask the mayor, since they're audible, who is going to be responsible for identifying voices on there?
I would probably leave that up to, to their investigators, and if they need to communicate with, um, city personnel or Southland Police Department, they certainly have the power to do that.
But we don't know if, if, and from chief would be the one to say, that so-and-so's voice, we don't know.
Yeah, and since we haven't heard back from civil rights DOJ at this time, I think we'd be pretty sure to speculate on that, but when they, when they do respond to our inquiry, I'll be sure to keep council, uh, apprised.
All right, one more question. For the record, that, that, uh, original thing was admitted in nineteen eighty-six and during the internet council.
Are, are we asking them to open up an investigation, or are we just saying, you guys do what you may with these tapes? I mean, and again, because it's a bit unclear, uh, if I were to send a letter and say, I will ask them to investigate these, in, in hopes of defining whether there should be an investigation or not, which could probably consistently say, open up investigation, but just seeing them and saying, you know, do what you may, hope that you may not find out, and maybe hope that you may find something, may not say anything to them as it being a priority to the city of South Bend, so are we looking for them to possibly do an investigation, or we're just leaving it up and for their, you know, uh, for their, uh, expertise, I guess?
Right, I think it is their expertise, I mean, the mayor was very clear, um, and, uh, this administrat, excuse me, this administration was very clear, and Aladin DeRose, the acting city attorney, was very clear in that letter to say that the mayor is concerned about these rumors, the mayor is concerned about the, um, possible content on those tapes, uh, that our community was concerned, and so we told them, they are an outside authority, we believe you have the power to do this, and we're asking you to help our community, um, to review the material, report back to us, so we can decide what to do.
Chief of Staff, um, there's a, a serious question that I'd need for the mayor to address.
Okay.
Which is in the letter, and the media has, um, just talked, um, he has shared publicly that he has a new standard, and that says that, um, if any of his administration, really basically, if any employee, um, is, has, um, an investigation brought against them, that they will no longer be a part of the administration, and, um, that, in, in my personal, um, opinion, is saying that if somebody brings a city, uh, state or federal investigation against you, that you automatically charge guilty and remove from office, without even giving us, um, any kind of, um, dissent. Now, one of the things that we have with the Board of Public Safety, which I really think how this whole situation, and people asking how this should have been handled, um, I think when an investigation was out here, um, before anybody was fired, demoted or whatever, that they should have been brought, put on administrative leave with or without pay, that could have been, doesn't really matter with me on that case, but then an investigation could have taken place, and then if, if it has been found, like it was found, that there was nothing that, um, was determined to, um, move forward with any other investigation, it could have been brought back to the position, or if there was something found, they could have been moved, that's what we do with our public safety offices, okay, and it's amazing to me that the chief, who's over the in public safety, is here in the same kind of respect, and so, um, therefore, I really think that it sets a very dangerous precedent in the city of South Bend, that if somebody, if I launch an investigation against you, or I launch an investigation against anybody else, if you automatically remove tomorrow, today says, hey, I know we've been paying some kids, we're done, I think that's wrong, and if you all want to deal with yourselves, why would you deal with any of the employees that work with us, and, um, because if somebody launched an investigation against me, I have a right to defend myself, and why are we taking that away from our city employees? And again, I would like for the mayor to respond to that, and the next meeting to see the public to go on record, to say that that's his new high standard, and please show me the new city policy that has addressed that matter, and see has, um, uh, how does that, um, relate to that, because I thought we had a, uh, situation, and when it came down to city employees, where they have a chance to, what you call it, progressive discipline, and now this administration has taken steps that one investig, uh, investigation removed, please show me how that works with the current, um, with, what has been traditionally, um, put in place by progressive discipline, and with the new mayor's stance, and sometimes not only his administrative stance, because the mayor does have a right to put in his stance, where I have felt that, the whole thing, part of the council is, is when he said that the mayor, I mean, the chief was demoted because of this investigation, if he said he was getting a new chief, what could he do, he would have moved on, but when he tied his reputation, his career to this investigation, that's where he brought it in, so that's where I want to understand, how does his practice deal with progressive discipline and investigation, I need to know that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll be sure that he, uh, brings that topic up.
Okay.
Six twenty-five.
Right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, any new business before this council? See, none of that, but now, we have privilege of the floor, privilege of the floor, as you have the opportunity to speak for three minutes after you give your name and address, this is not a question and answer period for anyone on the council, if you want something specifically for the council to look into, and you would like a written reply, there are forums that the first board he has, I think there are forums at the table, that whoever council committee that was called on to, it would be assigned to them, and he would, or she will get back to you if you so desire. Also, at the end of the meeting, if you'd like to speak to council member, they will come to you, no one will step up at the podium, or pass this floor, Mike Ingo, who's still back there, will come and escort you out. Go ahead, sir.
Greg Brown, twelve thirty-eight diamond. My concern is, southern Indiana has rules and policies and guidelines, this taking issue has been treated like we're a Commonwealth state, like Kentucky, we're making the rules as we go. If we are asking for investigation of the tapes, we're investigating people that are less seen, anybody can be accused, we're asking for investigation, our city's paying for this, who's investigating, our city is going to cost us money, even if they was to play the tapes in the room tonight, not one of us can say whose voice it is, so that's going to have to take some money to say whose voice, because the first person going to say, I didn't do it, I didn't say it, nobody's going to stand up, because if we was men, men do things, and we was a child, we acted as one, and this area has been some heavy things that supposedly say, I haven't heard the tape, and I'm not so sure I want to hear the tapes, because I can't identify anyone on there, but you look in the media and things are being passed by so quickly, we're going to set this board up for this person to investigate it, and that, all I'm asking as a concerned man in this city, is that we do it in a timely manner, not so we can put the unity back in this community, because I really feel that this setback is a setup for our comeback, now we got to come out of this and unify, but we can't come together as people until we can agree to disagree, there's something wrong, we move so fast on this, the administration moves so fast on this, and it's, as I said all the time, it's not a black or white issue, it's a right issue, and when you set things before the presence of the board, the council board, you guys are looking for answers, the community is looking for answers, but every day if something being aired in the media, someone is saying something, now the tapes is out there, I think that it should have went with a letter that is being sent to the community, someone is using racial slur, someone is hating someone or that, because if it's dealt like that, and as our mayor stated, when you bring into an investigation, this is a big investigation, because it's gone now, and the person listening to the investigation, I want to see if he gonna be gone.
Hello, my name is Cam Navarro, I live at two-two-two, East Navarro Street, I'm not going to have for a citizen unite for a better government, um, new press release today, citizens who are a better government, and I'm going to read it to you, it's been widely reported by the media in the San Jo County Metro Homicide Unit, Executive Board has recommended special investigation looking to the alleged threat made by San Jo County homicide commander Ken Corby, again, we'll take whatever action due necessarily after the investigation, that's their board, this is even more disturbing when it comes to one of the executive board members, Chief Hurley, has already publicly stated that one of the people that was threatened, he's going to discipline him for going public with him, he got a lot of concerns about that, so on May twenty-ninth, twenty-twelve, two of the government elected by Greg Dora, county attorney general, supervisor candidate, Paul Whistle, Indiana State Police, and Mike DeVoreyak, Mr. DeVoreyak prosecuted and chaired police in Indiana County General to take over the investigation of alleged threat made by the San Jo County Special Crime Commander Ken Corby, any investigation by Mr. DeVoreyak and the board pose a potential conflict until it is clear who is on the five tapes, turned over to the Justice Department, in other words, what I'm saying is, it might be one of the board members that investigated themselves, and that's the number one, so what we ask Mr. DeVoreyak, uh, to do, is turn it over to the attorney general and the state police on all of these issues, we are further acting for all people as one for public We are further asking for all people, as running for public office, the state, the city, the county, and fellow to join in and sign a letter that we're gonna send them to request the same thing.
One minute, sir.
It's very hard for this board of the Metro Homicide Unit, uh, to investigate Mr. Corbin and his threats. Especially when one of the officers on there already been threatening, uh, one of the people that, uh, alleged that had threats brought against him. And I'd like to say this, somebody from the fourteenth floor has sent a letter to Chicago asking Mr. Jesse Jackson to not investigate this matter, to step down off the mayor's, uh, get off the mayor's back when it was put. Uh, you don't have no control over Citizen United for a Better Government. We're here in South Bend. So where the shooter sent that letter to was to us, not to somebody in Chicago. Jesse Jackson do not have any power with Citizen United for a Better Government.
Sir, your time's up.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, once again, good evening, Colonel. Um, I'd just like to thank right off, thank, thanks right off the bat, uh, Mr. Davis.
You need your name and address, sir.
Oh, excuse me, my name is, uh, Daryl McKinney. I live at five zero-one Lonza Watson Drive, apartment three zero-four, here in South Bend, Indiana. And I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Davis right there for the help and, um, then, but he would always, and the rest of the council, for him always dropping, uh, letting everybody know and reminding them about the bridge over there on Chaperon. So, uh, once, uh, thank, thank God it's underway for the safety of the children over there and the rest of the people within the South Bend Housing Authority. But I'd like to also keep moving on from the bridge, also to start balancing things out a little bit also. You know, that's the first thing we can start on is, uh, the bridge. Now, we also have a problem still with the children, where are they gonna play? All right, so we got a brand-new property, and once again, like I stated before, we have a brand-new, uh, a brand-new baseball stadium, but the kids are still playing with inside, you know, that little area right there with no one to play. So bal- what I'm talking about balance now, we're gonna take care of the bridge now, it's some area right over there off the, uh, right off the railroad train tracks. There's, uh, plenty of room for them maybe to build, uh, a playground, a basketball, you know, anything like that. It's a lot of room over there, they could probably build something over there for those kids to cross the street and go here from both areas. They can come over the tracks from the new project, what I call it, come over that brand-new bridge and go to a bland, random playground. All right, and the project's just right there with South Bend Housing Authority, that's right there as well. So we got a whole bunch of area right there. We also have a very small building there that, um, could be even turned into a computer lab. The building's been there for some time. You know, you got a little ugly possum running in and out of from under there all the time. So go ahead and, uh, let's see if we can find some funds to get that building renewed, to go ahead and give us a computer lab for the kids as well. You know, we're talking about education right now. Uh, the mayor was talking about, uh, children's safety.
One minute, sir.
All right, so we're talking about safety again, so let's go ahead and get the kids to do during this summer. We can give them a computer lab with that old building, either get rid of it or give them a new one. We can get them a brand-new playground right over there, where there's plenty of, plenty of property to build something for those kids to play on.
Thank you. Daniel, do you want to speak?
Jesse Davis, thirteen thirty-three Calvert Street. Um, several people have already brought up the issue of the tapes and the threats that have been made and so forth. Um, basically, I want to, uh, ask the council or demand as a citizen that the council stay on top of this and make sure that, uh, they also look into investigate as much as they can on this issue. Um, the questions went out about who's on this board of directors for the Metro Homicide Unit. And not only was Chuck Hurley's name brought up, but you've got Sheriff Chris Zorrick, uh, you've got Tim Corbin involved in the, uh, Metro Homicide. And all of the players and names that were brought up on this board are not only friends and probably work together, but they're also political allies in a lot of ways. Uh, there's photographs of them all partying together, raising political funds for people, including the mayor's office, as a matter of fact, when he ran for mayor. Uh, so these people definitely have a conflict of interest, and are they gonna be willing to throw one of their own, uh, under the bus, for lack of better words, and say, hey, this guy did wrong, and this is his punishment? Um, I, I think the conflict of interest is too great. I also read an article in the paper yesterday where the FOP president, Officer Newman, uh, basically made a comment, said, look, we just wanna move on. You know, at this point, we can't just brush this under the rug and move on. He, he's the president of the FOP, he's supposed to be here representing not only the officers, the men in blue, but also representing the citizens to make sure that things are done right. And this guy comes out in the article and basically looks like he's selling out the union and the police officers and, and the people of the city. So I think this investigation, we need to make sure, Henry had asked, did they ask for an investigation or did we just hand them tapes and say, hey, you know, listen to these at your will, and if you think something's wrong, do something? No, we need to know what's on there. And I have a question, hopefully maybe the mayor's office can answer it for the council. All this extravagant recording system and phone system that was in place, used to record these calls, who had the authority at the police station to listen to any of these recordings? If there was a call that came in from the stairs, who's allowed to listen to them? Was it the chief that was demoted and then they brought their own taxi in so that he could defend someone? I mean, who has the authority to listen to those tapes? The people have a right to know that.
Thank you, sir.
I've got a paper from Mr. Wardy.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak to the council this time?
Council members, my name is Steve Murray, and I'm the captain of the Hope Hill House Thirty-Six. In regards to this investigation, I know there's a lot of concern within the community, just as there is within the police department. But I'd like to assure you and the public that the overwhelming majority of the police officers that work for the city of South Bend are not involved in this investigation in any way, shape, or form. And every night and every day, and I think Council President Dieter can attest to this, we go out every day serving our oath and protecting the citizens of South Bend. So I just wanted to make that point, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Dave Frank, five oh five two O. Burtonwood, South Bend. Uh, you know, there are nine people that are gonna impose their will on a hundred thousand people in the city of South Bend and probably two hundred and fifty thousand people in St. Joe County. I heard about this, uh, non-smoking or smoking, uh, uh, ban, and I personally import, I hate cigarettes. They killed my father at the age of fifty-two.
Excuse me, if you're hearing, that was already on the agenda, so.
Well, I understand that, I'm making a point here.
Okay, well, the point is, you can't talk about that.
My point is this, you people are supposed to be representing the people, and, and, and I don't know how you can do that unless you communicate with the people. A plan has been presented to eight of the nine of you to use technology so that before these issues come before you, the public has an opportunity to hear them, voice their opinions on it, and vote on it if they're interested in it. The other night, I was listening to the news and I heard one of you say that the majority of the people in South Bend are for this bill. And after that, I was, I was not only stunned, I was very confused, because there are a hundred thousand people in S- in South Bend. After I heard that on the, uh, news, I went out and started asking people in South Bend if they were even asked about this issue, and I never found one. So I really don't understand how anybody could misrepresent this issue or any other issue as far as saying that the people are for this, the majority of the people are for this, without communicating with the people. I don't think this town, this city can go forward until you use the technology that's available, that just about everybody else is using, to start communicating with the people in this community so that you can truly start representing the people. That's what I believe.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else wants to talk to us right now? Do you know, we're adjourned.